This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, um, it's about to call the Word of July 11th meeting of the Coopville County Council. And we want to invite you to say the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of this honest, nation, under God, in this court, never ceases to struggle. Um, I have no changes to the agenda, any council members? No, okay, so the agenda will stand as a meeting. I have you all had a chance to read the minutes of our meeting on July 27th. Any changes, corrections? Good job, and it's a stand up for this meeting. Okay, mayor's report, I don't have very much to report this time since our last meeting. Uh, I'll report that we had an interesting council of governments meeting in June. Uh, the topic was ferries, ferry system. We all agree about that. So, so they, uh, so John Vazina, who is the Director of Planning, Customer Service, and Government Relations, was there to answer our questions and talk about what they're doing, as well as Representative Dave Paul came to that meeting. He was on the transportation, specifically working on ferries. Um, so we all just expressed our unacknowledgedness with the new loss of the second boat on the Coopville route. Again, for the summer, all cancellations, the reservation problems, barriers to the ferries hiring process. And that is partially because of the fact that it takes four years to get, you know, a new hire through the system. You know, and the main job in the ferry system is just hard. The shortage of ferry inventory, the lack of progress being made on naval construction, and inconsistent service. Uh, so John, he also has a pathways to becoming naval positions in the ferry system. It's two pages where to start, training, go through the months, you have to be on the boat, or to reach the next level. Um, it's, it's four years, and it's hard. Um, and then it hasn't changed that much. His big announcement that he was excited about this being great in 10 years is that they are working on some high school programs. They're trying to recruit kids in high school and encourage them to have their ferry system. And specifically, I can't, I shouldn't know what city this is in. Some city or town has a, um, is it, what town is it? Has a mayor's role in that high school. So kids that are specifically interested in evolving and stuff, so they're especially working at that high school. Um, they have made a tiny positive change, and I think Dave Paul has a lot to do with this. Uh, you know, changing the legislature last year, allowing water staff to go out to bid on boats outside of state Washington. Because that was just, you know, they've gone through the progressive proposals and the negotiations twice now, I think. And many would come to terms with anybody in Washington State. So, you know, that's years that have gone by. First boat was just a young issue, and they don't even have, they don't even have contract still. So now they're saying that the first boat is, is expected to be delivered in 2027, but they don't even have a contract. Just, you know, it's the same stuff we hear, buy, can we, buy your company, buy used boats. And we contracted with a private company for ferry passenger services, and we just went and answered to make that not positive. So it's because wasn't that, yes, you don't have, is another problem? They are not allowed, everything was by legislative, by legisla-, by legislation, not allowed to contract with private companies. Uh, something happened. They, I guess they actually were starting, starting to look at some used ferries. But since the state of Washington has the biggest ferries system in the country, you know, most of the other ferries are sort of smaller than we are. And so it's not like they have a lot of extra, hanging around. Their boats are probably very, already aged now, like ours are. Um, a thing shocked me, I could just, I could just keep thinking this. I could swear that for all the journeys that I took for the last three years, that I was told there was a group plan to ferry by here for 10 years. I have been reading that, I, I, I'm just sure I heard that, and John Vazina looked like, where'd you get that? I, I think for you. Um, and he said, no, we, we can't, we're not, we can't commit plans beyond two years. We, we are committed to building two or three boats. I, I, I was just, I was shocked by that. Um, I do understand that not committing beyond a budget, but there's, uh, the good news. Well, and the good news is, the good news is Representative Paul has been working really hard within the Transportation Committee. And also there's 33 other legislators that come from counties with various facts. And so he's trying to get that whole group to be stronger and lobbying for what the ferries to be. Um, he suggested that, was once suggested at the meeting, that we start working with our legislators more and include those other 33 legislators. Um, so that is something we consider, you know, if we consider sending others and stuff, maybe start all over, companies that are legislators now. Um, you could also send letters who aren't set. Uh, let's see, what are, I love it, there are people who are saying, is there a choice right? Oh, yeah, that's, in Washington, yeah, okay, it's not just us.
Well, I know, it's, yeah. Have you ever?
Um, well, at this, at the last two council meetings, we've had representatives, uh, in May online, June person, um, people from the council. I've gotten one, and today especially came to talk to hear what was said at this meeting, at this council. And they've been asking me, they've contacted me, they have copies of the letters we've written, and I sent them copies and the responses. Yeah, it is not just, yeah, of course, it's all, it's all draft. And John, and John declined me at that meeting, and I go, yes, John, but I'm representing, I understand that, I understand that. But I, I, I can't take my, the ferry system, you have to work with what, what is important to our residents. So I do this to never, just be ones of, I'm always, that, I'm always kind of speaking about, to others. All this, all this, all of this, all this stuff, to be able to, to be able to. Yeah, um, San Juan, it's not even 30 minutes getting to me to talk about online. It wasn't low on the card, right now it's not even, you know, they're not even committing to a time, a couple full time. No, 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 not San Juan, not San Juan, yes, I'm sorry, no, San Juan. San Juan is by the, this only way to get here, yes, yes, I'm sorry, yeah, the Canadian one, yeah. But, no, but I, I know, a question about the four years is, is that four years to be a, I don't know, like, how long is the boat, I feel surprised. But, was it just four years to be able to, like, drive? Oh, in between them, in between them, so you're not really on campus here, where, which you can, you can have an engineer, um, uh, a, I don't know. So it's a higher level position, not, uh, folks on the ground that are, because that's, that's the higher level that's what they're short. Those are the people, when those higher level that are on the boat, on the ferry, they don't show up for work again, maybe that's why they stay canceled. So they can, they can shift if the ticket taker doesn't come in for the day. I mean, that's, those are all poor jobs, but they've got no flexibility in those jobs that don't require passion getting on to the ferry.
I was wondering if maybe I have experience of getting involved in that.
Is it, is it still true, I guess it is the four years, that even if I was a captain of a ship, for a hundred years? Yes, that went on a command, my 10 years, not a situation, and I started on this excellent week, that's what I thought. It's just crazy, there's actually a ferry captain in the Coopville, who flies to California, very long, and works down there for a few days, and then flies back. And he has, he had checked into me, and he didn't have his words, of course, he would like to work here instead of getting on a plane. And they would not, he wasn't granted any credit for his years of being a captain, except starting from the bottom. Where could I come up with these things? I said, here on call, so he would hear, and then get called, and then, that's it, oh, he would write down, and then he'd call us. But if he's working on, in California, on some kind of state ferry system, I'm not sure, but if it's a coast guard, I, I don't think San Juan's a plan. So they need, but he's in West, or let me say, there's need for three years to, right, so it's, uh, coast guard. But that is a matter of issue, I mean, again, just like it's not, we're out of the center, the whole center problem, ferries. It's not Washington's to ferries, they were, all the ferry systems, all the maritime services are all having problems with, with getting placed. They all are falling through, um, schedules, so. They are moving ahead, the one thing they're not changing is they are moving ahead, that any ferries are going to be all that. Um, or, or freight, which is the, which is, I, 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 so there's still moving forward, that's still moving forward, getting, charging stations at the ferry terminals. Okay, I'm just, I'm just a Debbie Downer office, so whatever, I appreciate you always speaking to me. Um, it's been a long time. Yeah, so I had the meeting, I said, well, I'm hearing John is that I need to start communicating with the registrators instead of you. And he's, oh, I'm, I was like, oh, yeah, I bet you, yeah. Okay. Is, is D C with your, your manager?
Okay, so just a quick note that Donna had her second public hearing for the con plan draft. And she, they, you know, as you know, they've just done a fabulous job of including a lot of the input that they're giving to the public, really making the public feeling, feeling, feel heard. At the first public hearing, there was about 30 people there, and they still had comments to it. And at the second public hearing, there was about four people there, and they didn't, they weren't having, well, because, because they feel happy that even if, that their changes have been included, or else they've been heard. So, um, they were just there kind of like to finish out the process, because they've been involved. And the, and the planning commission has just done a great job. And so the planning commission approved the draft, and is, and will recommend it to the town council. Donna has, it's a draft, Donna wants to clean it up. It really needs to be the final thing before the, before the, the final document, before the council approves it. So she's wants more photographs, she wants more graphics, she's cleaning it up, she's going through it. It's being, um, it's still being reserved, reviewed by our attorney, by different state, state agencies. And so we gotta get all those final approvals, and she's hoping to bring to the council in August. Wow. Okay. Um, let you know that the Coopville Lions had a very successful garage sale. There was a beautiful, beautiful weekend, thousands of people. I saw, me and Rip worked, I saw Jenny there, who else? Did you guys, oh, Jackie, yeah, you, you didn't, you missed it, huh? Um, so, and what we always do, so tomorrow night is the Burger Vern in town, in town park, where all the volunteers that have worked on the garage sale come and have their hamburger dinner. But the reason we come is because they make announcement of how much money we made. So it's usually the other side of 40,000, so we'll see what happens. Um, was, was there a lot of stuff, well?
No, there, we didn't have much, but hopefully we have, so, very much. One, two, three, four.
Your area was on T, and kind of your furniture and pet supply, all gone. Yeah, yeah. And, and one of our lines did a really good job of working with the Garage of Blessings, that free, that nonprofit in O'Carver that gives stuff away free. And they came and just like took everything, almost like all, like all in the multipurpose room. Instead of boxing stuff up to be put in dumpsters, we boxed stuff up, stuff up and put it in their trailer. Um, so obviously they could take everything, but like the big stuff. But, uh, we did, that really helped, hopefully gave those items another life and reduced our landfill costs. Okay, so 4th of July, very few complaints, there was very few complaints about firework discharges outside of the approved hours on the 4th of July. Um, I had a new resident that lives in town, hadn't experienced 4th of July here, said he thought it sounded like a switch went off at 11 o'clock.
Two minutes to 11.
I mean, it's like, like, everybody honored that 11 o'clock mark. Um, it was pretty impressive, there was no injuries or fires. Um, there was, and there was just a few complaints during the day, that they were complaints about legal fireworks. So, you know, they were, you know, their dogs were upset, or they were worried about fire danger. It's basically the same people that call the police every year. And so the police went, they went, our officer, by the way, changed his shift and stayed till midnight. Um, so he was in town and available for calls, and went to all the calls and checked them out. But he said he found that, um, that what anybody was doing was legal, so.
So where there was confusion with some of the folks, as they were going by the county regulations, they didn't know the town had an order. And so they were lighting stuff off a lot earlier during the day, it was going on and on and on. And we didn't, we told a couple people, no, actually, don't go by the county, we go by the town, county has to.
Oh, earlier before the 4th of July, I mean, yeah, yeah.
So that was the confusion there, you know, but it was light on water.
Oh, absolutely. In the member, in the newsletter, yeah, so it was, I think it was, I think we had a good, I think our residents really respected the rules, and we had a safe and happy 4th of July.
And, and I heard from a lot of my friends in the county how nightmarish it was.
Well, they go out for days, right?
Oh, yeah.
And lots, so is O'Carver, yeah. Yeah. So I think we, we struck a good, um, happy meeting with our fireworks, and, okay, so the big news, my last of the big news, is that the street work finally started on Con Street. But I have to tell you, we have come full circle with our Front Street plan. We're back to how, where we started. We were originally going to paint over the existing parking stripes and paint new ones, right? And put up signs. And then we got this big idea that we would seal coat Front Street and Alexander, make a beautiful black surface, and have everything look plain and pretty. Before you seal coat, we go out and crack seal, which is lighting hot tar stuff into the cracks to fill them up before you seal coat. So the crew's been doing that for a week or two, and they finally just decided, Joe went down there, and he took, um, the roads, person from the county down, Jackie went in. And they just decided that Front Street was in a lot worse condition than they realized. And so they, and so they agreed, Joe and Jackie agreed, that Front Street would probably qualify for a T I B grant for asphalt overlay. So then it became the issue of, oh, that we seal coat, and then turn around next year, and, and lay down asphalt, and, and let, and I'll tell you, it was a really correct decision for me, usually I know the right, to make the right decision for the right reasons. But I was just like, oh my gosh, we've changed this plan so many times. Um, but so, and the problem is, you couldn't do both, because if you seal coat, you have improved the condition of the road enough, that you don't qualify for the over, the asphalt overlay. So, and then Joe wants to, so we decided to do that. We decided we're gonna go back to the original plan, we're just gonna paint over the lines that are there for this year. Um, T I B grants are due next month, and then we find out in December if we get it. So this, you know, we'll find out right away where the plan is. And, and then of course, though, we'll be contracting with the county, so the asphalt overlay would not be done until this late in the summer of 2024. But so in the meantime, we're still, the four-way stop intersection got installed today. And so then tomorrow, they, he's, they're gonna put up signs, they're gonna start doing the traffic, changing the traffic signs. And they're gonna start, they're working on Alexander first, and changing the direction of those angle parking. So then, even though it's one way down on Front Street, people can still use the parallel parking until we get it all done, right? And then, um, so that he wants, he thinks they'll have all the signs up, and Alexander done this week, and they will have the project complete next week. And the reason why it's taking that long is because they're only gonna work in the early, early morning hours before the businesses are open up there. So they work a few hours every day, plus they still have to finish, they have decided to go ahead and finish all the crack seal. Or they get a overlay in Alexander. Um, he, he's gonna look at it, it doesn't look like Alexander is in the same shape that Front Street is, and the road has to be in a certain condition before you qualify. He, what he does want to do though, and this is interesting, um, when he puts the application in to overlay Front Street, he wants to add a wide kind of raised, so it'll look like one of those speedhums. It'll be like what they put in front of the Boys and Girls Club, that will be an ADA crosswalk at Grace Street, so that can get people from that side over to the sidewalk on the north side. Um, so that, we've been asked for that before, so, um, that will probably also, that's good for points on our application. So that's what we decided to do. So we're still making the change, we're gonna just back to the beginning.
I was still playing with the coins.
I was counting.
Woo!
I went right through it, no, I got it.
I had somebody almost come through.
Well, I had, and I asked Joe, I said, you're putting up, I said, the doors are not gonna be the problem, because it's gonna be the loopholes that blow through that, right? And so you're putting up signs, you know, on Coven, he said, yes, yes, yes. And then late this afternoon, like about 4 o'clock, I got an email from Linda Evans, who sits right there in the chamber and watches everything that goes on in that crosswalk, and she's the one that's been saying forever, we need a four-way. She goes, it's so exciting to see this done, it's so entertaining. The visitors are just fine, they all stop and they go when they're supposed to, like, like they know what a four-way stop sign is. And our residents are either blowing through it, or they're stopping and not knowing what to do.
Like, what do we, what do we do?
Can't they put blinking lights on those, all those crosswalk things that have the battery operating?
We have the flash alarm.
Maybe they should stick those on the board for a month or two, just so people know.
Oh, see that it's there?
Yeah.
Well, they, that's why Joe put the street, the signs out on the street, but that might not be enough, for a while.
Because we have flashers already on the crosswalk.
He, yeah, but that's just for the one crosswalk, um, but he's talking about like on the new streets, stop signs even actually, to, to bring attention to them, yeah.
I was just thinking, on their, it's, yeah, it's touristy, so I would, see some, one of their, so that.
Yeah, I am. So that's, so that was the first thing that was done, and everybody seems to be excited about the beginning complaints. No. No, because my phone has been ringing off the hook for three days. Did you guys get the postcard from Corr in your mail? It says, call Mayor Molly?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I didn't read that part.
Everybody's calling Mayor Molly.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
But you had good company, you're two senators and representative and Mayor Molly.
What's too bad, what's too bad is that Commissioner Bacon was not on that list, and so I'm getting all the local offices, I'm getting all of them. Which is fine, which is fine, you know, even if people live outside of our town, and it's Coopville is their town, and that's fine. But what is interesting, I'll tell you, and, uh, because now, if I say this in a public meeting, maybe Corr will call me. Um, they, this is kind of backfiring on me. I'm taking, I'm, I start, I, when the calls started coming in, I was getting so many of them, I thought, oh my gosh, I gotta keep track of this. Uh, the people that are calling me to say they support the Navy, the noise doesn't bother them, they don't want the base to go away, are outnumbering the people that are calling to complain about the noise, which is very interesting.
Where did they?
The, uh, both in town and out of town? All in Coop, oh, yes, yes, everybody, yes, everybody that's calling is in Coop. Um, but you know, you hear that there's those Navy supporters, but when it comes to the, like, seven years ago, when we had the big public meetings, and everything was so contentious, and really, all you really heard from was the people that didn't like the noise. And, and you just kept hearing that there was other people out there that disagreed, but if they don't stand up and say something, you're, you're kind of stuck. And so this, this postcard seemed to be a, a hot point for them, and they're picking up the phone and calling me. So literally, I mean, it's, it's close, but usually it's, um, more people in favor of the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, ten. Like the Navy, support the Navy, don't want the base to go away, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I'm seven, so what did I say, seven to eight? So it's, so it's really, really close, but it's, I'm definitely hearing from the people this time that support the base, don't wanna hear about this noise issue anymore, um, don't want the base to go away, appreciate the jobs, appreciate the revenue that comes in, appreciate the Navy being here, support the Navy.
Well, and just to be clear, there, I mean, I didn't see a call for the Navy to go away, but, so, you know.
Well, but, but if they said that, I, I would say, I don't have a feeling. But, uh, they are, everybody's just parroting what was on the postcard. And so one of the things on the postcard was tell the Navy to go do, do the touch and goes in Nevada or California. If the Navy were to ever be forced to do the touch and goes in Nevada or California, they would move the brawlers. I mean, so basically that's what, it would, it would have a huge impact on the base and would put our base at risk, if, I think, if the brawlers were moved. So I think that's their point, they're saying, if you're trying to get the brawlers moved out of our base, you're putting our base in danger.
We have plans for it.
Mm-hmm, and the jobs, yeah.
My only complaint this year, because in past years, they've stopped at midnight, pretty much, and now they're going much later.
Till one, yeah.
One, or one, it was 1:30.
Right.
And that, yeah, I get a little irritated, I wish they would, if I knew they were gonna stop at midnight, it's like, I can't handle that. But when it continues to go on a lot after midnight, and I don't know why, they, because they used to always be really good about stopping, moving.
I think it's, I think it's a matter of how many pilots they're having to get through the process at a given time.
But sometimes they don't start, I don't know, they just look away to get started earlier.
Well, you know why, right? Because they're, in the summer, they have to have a certain number of nighttime touch and goes.
I know, I understand, but sometimes they don't start.
Oh, okay.
Anyway, that's my only complaint, isn't it really going late?
Well, so I have called for to see what prompted this postcard, because it also says to call all of us within two weeks. I am unaware of anything happening in two weeks, I'm unaware of any, um, any decision, any, um, lawsuit decision coming up. So I, I don't know if they just put that to get people to do it, or what. So I've called a couple people before, I got about the postcard, but I haven't heard back from anyone. Okay, and that's kind of it, there's no more, I don't have any community events on my calendar between now and the next meeting to tell you about. And our next meeting is July 27th. Any questions? Pardon me?
The touch and charge tomorrow.
Oh, that is tomorrow, my gosh, that's so fun. That is, um, two to three days, I know random things, Emily's giving me a thumbs up, so. And that is the most fun, and whoever puts that on first, that is, are you guys putting that on this time? Yeah, yeah. Um, and our, who will be participating, our public works guys will be, they love it, they love to be part of that. They were nervous last year, um, because they had never participated before, but they had a blast, you know, good time.
The only thing I heard were the parents at work, because their kids really wanna go.
Well, it should be a beautiful table. Okay. Pick up some of those kids.
Yeah, I'll take one.
I really do, I do. Okay, guys, so our, first item on our agenda is a presentation from our own beloved Snow Isle Library.
On example.
Oh, on example, is there? Oh, audience input, is there, I'm sorry, is there anybody online?
There are, um, two participants online.
So are they, can they just?
I'm just opening it up right now. I have opened up the, um, mics, you will need to accept to be able to unmute yourself. If you wanna add, audience input is open now.
So they, they have to unmute themselves?
Thank you, they have the ability to do it.
Okay. Okay. Uh, two of you, I guess, so you're being, you're staying quiet, so we're gonna move on from audience input? Okay, thank you for reminding me of that. Um, so now, we have a presentation from Snow Isle Library. Our, you know, our, the library that we love. We have Lois Langer, who is the Executive Director for Snow Isle. She's the big, big co-host we've got with us tonight. Um, and then our brand-new Coopville Library Manager, Emily Felt. And then we have Vanessa, who is the Community Engagement Manager, and I'm sorry, I don't know, are you with the library?
I'm Jennifer Craig, I'm with the island for, because he's not with us.
Oh, great, thank you. Welcome, welcome all. And they are here to give us a little update on what our library's up to.
Thank you very much, Mayor Hughes, and members of the council for having us tonight. As we noted, we have a number of people with us. And just a quick note about the Board of Trustees, it's a seven-member governing board for the Snow Isle, which is Snohomish and Island County. And we have five representatives from Snohomish County, two from Ireland. So one from Comeno and one from Woodbee. Marty Anamosis served many years on the Board of Trustees and, um, retire me, so I'm very fond of her. And, but Jennifer has more than wonderfully stepped into the role of representing Woodbee, but also the whole district. So we appreciate this opportunity to share and update with you and connect with you. Snow Isle Library centers our work around equity, diversity, and inclusion to help us achieve our vision of connecting everyone in our community with their library. We're committed to creating welcoming and inspiring spaces to bring our community together. I think we have a, uh, a PowerPoint, it'll come up in a minute, no worries, we have, you know, we have it tonight.
We have it.
Oh, you have it, okay, great. So as you know, the Coopville Library is the cornerstone of our community. We started providing library service here in nineteen sixty-three, and voters approved annexation to the Snow Isle Regional Library District starting on January of nineteen ninety-eight. And are, through the, being part of the Snow Isle Library District, the entire community has access to one point eight million items, which could never happen if it was just the local Coopville Library. And I just wanna also thank the Coopville community for supporting the building of that beautiful library. It's really one of the gems, it has one of the best views, um, it's just a beautiful, beautiful library, and that is thanks to the community here. The library's a place where we gather for learning, reading, and to seek and exchange information and ideas. And the power and value of community places seen every day at the library. Snow Isle Libraries will continue its commitment to working closely with our communities to make our libraries welcoming, inclusive, and easy to use. The library supports our local businesses through access to information on related businesses, growing their customer base, finding demographic data and market insights, and learning a new skill through LinkedIn Learning. And all of that can be done free with your library card. The library's also removing barriers by connecting our community to the beautiful outdoors by having Discover passes available to borrow. And that is also available free with your library card. You're gonna start seeing the theme here. Uh, the library helps our community discover something new with genealogy, auto repair, magazines from Consumer Reports to Martha Stewart, World News Collection. Of course, we have eBooks and digital audiobooks, one of which I was listening on my trips out here. And you guessed it, all of that comes free with your library card. Also important, as we learned with the touch and truck, one of our favorite and most popular programs across the district is engaging all the children in our community, it's a priority for us. We provide early room support, STEM education programs through access cards, and online homework help. So not as important right now in the summer, but during the school year, students have access, uh, for homework help, your parents are able to assist them. We're also helping to build infrastructure, we're continuing to invest in Wi-Fi access for our communities. We also serve on the Island County Broadband Action Team, and we're working towards equitable digital access for all. This access allows all of our community members to access telehealth, job interviews, and find the information that they need. We'll continue to have laptops and Wi-Fi hotspots for checkout, and we'll provide access to Wi-Fi at the library and in the parking lot when we're not open. This essential service was prevalent during, I know, the windstorms. My first trip to Woodbee Island, there was a windstorm and power went out while I was out here. So, I think of windstorms, I think of fondly of Woodbee in my trip out here. But often the library, because of our ability to provide it, provided access to power so people could power up their phones, have access to the internet if you didn't have it at home. So we supported individuals and businesses without power during that time. We also serve as a community distribution point across our county and access to voting ballot boxes. And the new Equity Diversity Inclusion, or EDI, section that was added to our website to celebrate and explore three areas: accessibility, citizenship, and EDI programs and services. Customers can browse the website in seven languages: English, Chinese, Japanese, Korean, Russian, Spanish, and Vietnamese. We enhance the in-line browsing capabilities for a better search experience. And unfortunately, we have to do this, but we do, are willing to serve as a cooling and heating center during wildfire season and during the unanticipated heat that we're not having here in the Pacific Northwest. But I'm really excited to introduce you to Emily Felt. She will share more information about the specific programs here and events here at Coopville Library. She started as the new library manager a month ago? Two, two whole months, she's practically an old timer. And is building community relationships and bringing quality programs into the community. Emily's worked at Snow Isle Libraries for over thirteen years and had her start here at the Snow Isle Library. We took her over to the other side for a little while, but she's back, back home. And I just wanna personally say Emily is just a great asset to Snow Isle Libraries, and I'm really excited for your community to have her here at Woodbee Library. So, over to you, Emily.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everybody, so I'm Emily Felt, um, and I'm your new library manager. Thank you so much for having me and for having us here tonight. Um, I am a longtime Woodbee Island resident, I am a Southender, so I feel like I need to say that. Uh, but I grew up on Woodbee, I graduated from Southwoodbury High School, and I was a, um, frequent patron of the Freeland and Langley Libraries, especially as a small person. And so I'm really excited to kick off my update tonight by telling you about some of the cool things we're doing for kids at the Coopville Library. Um, so we have some ongoing youth events during school year. We do a weekly storytime, as well as, um, educational and enrichment programs during school breaks. Um, over the summer, instead of our regular storytime, we're hosting Ranger Reads, which is a storytime where we actually have a central, uh, Woodbee State Parks Ranger come out and read stories to the kids outside on the green, it's super fun. Um, our summer reading programming began on June first, that's where we invite kids to read ten hours and per minute a free book, and we do some, um, some programs in conjunction with that. And it was already mentioned, but tomorrow, two to three thirty, we are hosting Touch a Truck, um, where everybody can come out and see all the vehicles that keep our town running smoothly. Um, and we really appreciate Public Works's support in doing that, um, for their participation in this event. And I will be there in my summer reading shirt, and it's super exciting to see y'all there. Um, we're also hosting art explorers programs for children. Um, this is funded through a grant that we got from the Coopville Festival Association. Um, and our team really likes partnering in the community to bring those educational opportunities to the kids of Coopville. Uh, for adults, we are hosting a Monday morning crafting circle for folks to get together and work on their table crafts. Uh, we know that arts and crafts are a big thing in Coopville. Um, we also collect a lot of craft materials, craft books, and videos, including a new video tutorial service called Creative Bug, which is pretty exciting. Um, in late August, we'd love to invite y'all to come out on the thirtieth and thirty-first. We're going to have a multi-sensory book help exhibit set up in our meeting room. Uh, it's the Port Towns and Marine Science Center, and they've got like this cool kind of little mersey in the Salish Sea. It's gonna be a really cool way for people of all ages to learn about that. Um, we've got a great teen librarian, Rachel, who's got wonderful connections in our community. She's working with our local middle and high schools. Um, you'll see her out in the community, working with local youth, and hosting a queer teen book group at Need Market. Um, all of these programs that I just mentioned are hosted by our generous friends of the Coopville Library. Um, they support our programs through their ongoing book sale in our library lobby, as well as the weekly book sale they host at the farmer's market out there on the community green. Um, they're such wonderful supporters of our library and advocates for what we do in the community, and we're very lucky to have them as our friends. Um, last thing I wanted to mention is that Lois told you about all kinds of great databases and, um, and things that we offer through the library. And I wanted to offer one more thing to add on to that, which is human help in doing all of that. So we've got a wonderful staff down at the Coopville Library who will help you download eBooks, who will help you use the Consumer Reports database, who will help you look up some of that business, uh, information. And so any of that is free with your library card, and so is the human assistance in doing that. So, um, come and see us, and I will turn it back over to Lois.
So you can see, it's kind of hard, because she doesn't get very excited about it, about working with him. It is really exciting, and it is a fabulous staff. And I, uh, would encourage you, anything you're interested, to come and ask for that help, because there's so much change and so many things available to you, and having that staff member help you walk through it is really great. So we're a resource for you as well, we're here to help you, we're here to make sure Coopville is a great place to live and play. Um, and I'd invite all of you to come for a visit and tour, I'd be happy to come back, I'd love a trip to the island. So, if you, if you wanna meet me at the library, or just wanna meet Emily, we'd love to give you a tour and show you around and see what's happening. So, thank you for your time tonight, we'd love to open up to questions or suggestions that you have for us as well.
I do, I do have one question.
Yeah.
I always have a question. Um, this has really bothered me for a long time. Are you guys having to deal with people that want to ban books in the Snow Isle system and all? Because a lot of the books that we had in high school and college, college prep classes that we enjoyed reading and you could bank for yourself are being banned. Are you, is this system having a problem?
Yeah, that's a great question. We do not, we have a very, talking about the staff that we work with, we have a very strong department that selects the collection. We also, the Board of Trustees, which Jennifer's on, has set a collection development policy that states that we, uh, collect widely and deeply to meet the needs of everyone. And we really believe in intellectual freedom, that you have the right to choose what's best for you and your family. And so, we really support that. So when we've had questions about why we might have something, we have staff that engage, and I'm sure Emily has had conversations. Uh, there is a whole process, but we are not seeing a really strong concerted effort like we're seeing in some other communities. And I think that has to do with the, the breadth of the collection that we, the commitment that we've made to our community to pick a collection that really serves the community. But we are gonna stand strong in that. And I'm, I'm really proud of, uh, in fact, let's see, a couple of weeks ago, at, uh, there was a, it was in Langley, we did a, there was a Pride Festival, and there was a book fair for LGBTQI. About seventy people stopped by and looked at the books. So we're also not backing down for making sure everyone is aware of the breadth of the collection that we have to offer. Yeah, thank you.
Can, can I just ask, or go ahead, a follow-up, since, um, cooling and heating, um, centers? So are, are you, are you being like, in the winter, your library is warm, and in the summer, it's cool? So you're not really changing your hours or doing any other programs other than just, um, making people aware that you're a safe, comfortable place to be during extreme weather?
We have in a couple of places, I'd have to look that where, but, um, when the wildfire, which I don't think is quite as bad out here as it is in some of the other parts of Snohomish, but we have been helped sometimes with expanded hours, uh, for people that just, you know, and it got so bad in Darrington last summer, where it was whatever, I don't know how horrible it was. So we are looking at that, how we can best help the community, because, as you know, lots of people don't have air conditioning, and so when those wildfires happen, it doesn't help to say turn your air conditioning on. But also, just a reminder, we're one of the places in the community that people can go to cool off, to warm up, to have fresh, fresh breathable air.
And then when you also said in your, um, presentation, you, when you came out and it was a windstorm, and you provided, you know, the ability, so, to charge phones and, and check in. Do you guys have a generator at the library? How, how did that work?
We don't have, right? I don't think we.
It was a agreement, it's not.
Uh, Langley has a generator, but what often happens, uh, I don't understand power grid, so, uh, but there, it's sometimes we're in the central business district, and so will the power more quickly than some of the.
All right, okay, okay.
Yeah, so somebody will, we're quicker to come back up, yeah.
Emily, is the Friends of the Library accepting donations and books?
Sure, well, they don't worry. They will take one bag or one box per day. They would like to, you know, have time to sort through them, but they are taking donations, yeah.
Okay, well, is there a particular time of day?
When the library is open, yeah, we have a special cabinet for them. So I'd be happy to show you where that is.
Thank you.
But you have to be careful, because when the, when the shelves are full, then you can't leave.
We do fill up sometimes, you can always give us a call first and, and kind of check the status.
And you take paper back and everything?
Yeah, if it's in good condition, then, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I was told by the Friends of the Library that we can bring them on Saturday during the conference.
They would take that too, yeah, they're right there, they've picked up their shed, so that would be easy for them, yeah.
Go ahead. Well, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment, just a great ghost story for y'all. So for many years, I was a social worker with the county. And we had a program a few years ago where we helped young people coming out of jail find places to live. And then we provided them case management services, and how to get connected to the community, and those kinds of things. And one of the things that case manager would do would be to talk with the person and to find out kind of what their strengths were, what they liked to do, et cetera, et cetera. And I'll never forget the story about this one young man, when our caseworker was talking with him, he said, "One of the things he'd really like to do was read." And so the case manager said, "Well, you know, you've gone and got your library card." And the young man said, "Well, I can't afford it." And the case manager said, "Oh, no, no, they're free, I'll, let's go right now and get one." And so they did, and that changed that young man's life, yeah. I've, I've never forgotten that story.
Yeah.
They thought he had to pay, and so he had.
Yeah, I think it's really what keeps me going, because the library for some people is a nice amenity, but for other people, it really is the lightbulb. It's really what connects them, and you hear these stories about people who, after their education, started a business, were able to turn their life around by being able to access those materials. And just one other story that we, uh, forgot about, so you mentioned that. The State Library is running a program. When people are being released from a correctional facility and being sent back, they are asked what, where they're gonna go live. They have to, I think they have to declare that. And then they're offered a library card from that place. And so they have it already, uh, they don't have to come in and register, it's ready to go. And so they walk out and go into there, it's a way for them to feel welcome, to break that barrier for people who maybe have it used or don't know it. But, um, we just started doing it, so I don't have any numbers of how many we've given. Um, but, uh, we're starting, the Secretary of State is doing that, uh, through that, through the State Library. So it's a, it's a great program to give.
It was a parenting program in the jail. And one of the things that, was one of my staff that ran it, and the way, it was mostly for men, because it's, and it's most of the people in our jail here are men. But what they would start out doing was, he would always bring two or three children's books, and they'd take turns reading the books so they could, you know, it was like, help, help you practice reading to your child, or a nephew, or an niece, or a neighbor, when you get out. And, and the guys, they loved it, they just, they just loved it.
Yeah, there was a, uh, the library, we took a tour, we also did a program where, um, the person in the facility would read, record, uh, read a book out loud and record it. And then we would send the recording and the book home to the child so they could hear the parent's voice and be read to by the parent. So it's a little trickier sometimes now with correctional facilities, there've been some tightening up for good reason about access, but, um, it's just reminded that was a great program, so we can make a bit to try to do that again, yeah.
Yeah, reading is powerful.
Reading is powerful, yeah, yeah. Which is why sometimes people want to, but, but I believe in, uh, there's nothing dangerous in an idea. The only thing dangerous is not.
I think it's Discover pass checkout. Emily just told me that when we met last, I could not believe that. That's wonderful service.
Yeah, I think it helps break down those barriers too, again, other people who, that thirty dollars might be just too much. Or they may not know if they would ever use it, so it doesn't feel like a value, and so you go once to Fort Casey, and it'll be after every week, repeated, so.
And, and the, you know, like, I was thinking about that, like, the thirty dollars. I know, um, seniors that can't afford internet at their home, but they're, they're, you know, wanted, needed, know how to use it. And so they have, they go check in at the library once a day or once a week, and, and get their internet service and their email, like, their location, I mean, that's huge. That can be a big bill. A lot of people in the parking lot using that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, it's reliable, fast, and as secure, much more secure than you're gonna find in other public places. So we really appreciate people using that.
Well, I was, I had construction right out of my house, you know, and so many times for the last six months, when it's gotten too noisy and crazy, I take my book and come down and put it on the line, and we're even sitting one of your markers to it, like, we, he's quiet, we're, yeah.
I just wanted to express my gratitude. Emily, you made the comment about, you know, the human elements and people there to help. We have an adult daughter, a young sister, who lives at home with us. Most of us, she's spending time in the library during the resident. And so your staff's very kind to assist her. And, uh, the passes, there are a number of, uh, adult with disability on the island, and their caretakers, I know they love to have an opportunity to take them to state parks and use those passes. One, in fact, had that in living room, and they went down to the beach, and they got a ticket. And it's how it wanted to pass, so, problem solved. And, uh, you know, Rick's, Rick's question about banned books, you know, which is something, uh, close to my heart, and your term of intellectual freedom. I, I wanna express my gratitude for you standing firm on that. I want to express my gratitude for you standing firm on that, on behalf of all of us. So, thank you.
I've never understood why those people that want to read banned books, well, then don't read.
Well, thank you for your time, we really appreciate it.
Well, we just, we love, yeah, we love everything about it, all the people that work there, all the services you provide, that, you know, one of the best gems, treasures in the community is the meeting room that you guys added with the remodel.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that is so necessary and huge and important to so many groups in our community. It's just wonderful, wonderful resource.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks to all four of you for being here.
The team's a really good team, actually.
We'll be seeing you around, Emily.
Come visit.
Okay, now, you guys don't hurt, you are welcome to stay, but you don't hurt anything. We do have a pretty short meeting, but it's pretty much.
Unless you want to hear them on street closures.
Yeah. And whole changes, that's pretty riveting stuff.
I will understand.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys.
I too.
Okay, that was, so we are a library.
Really upbeat.
Yeah. So, our first item of new business is to approve our street closures for the 2023 Arts and Crafts Festival, something you do every year. The streets are all, I believe, just exactly the same as they always been. They have an expanded or reduced the festival area. I know, you know, I have a list, I have given you a list of what the streets are. We've gone over the Arts and Crafts Festival, Festival Special Event with our police and our Public Works, and we're ready to go.
I will make the motion to approve the closure of streets and parking lots as listed between Office 10th and 13th for the 2023 Arts and Crafts Festival.
I second.
Is there any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously, thank you, excited for the festival, second weekend in August. Are they going to do what?
Fewer booths.
Fewer booths? They are creeping up every year, a little bit, they add fewer every year, but they're still, they're still way less than at the max, yeah, than they were. Okay, the next item is a decision on our commercial property on North Main Street. As we discussed, some conditions of the sale were changed from what we were originally told. And one of them, I think the most important to the council, is that the access was changed by the owner instead of getting, instead of doing an access agreement, access agreement from 4th Street, he now wants the access to be off of North Main. And as you already know, that's a 50-foot wide lot. It's a tiny, tiny lot, 50 foot is the minimum it can be to build on. And so, then, when you have setbacks and then an access, it's really reducing the potential uses of that piece of property. So, I had originally made a letter of intent like you asked me to, and now I am including a letter to officially, like you have asked me to officially decline the offer of sale. I think that's the polite way to do it. Still very nice of the seller to offer it to the town first, we appreciate that. But at this time, without a particular use and with the limitations on the law, I think that's what you guys wanted to do. And if that is, I'll take the motion.
I'm going to authorize the planning director to sign a letter declining the offer to purchase parcel number S6415-00-40002-0.
Sorry.
Any other, any other discussion on this item? Okay, moved in seconded to decline the offer of the parcel on North Main. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. And our last item of official new business is to adopt ordinance 786. We discussed this at the last meeting, I told you I was going to bring it forward after we got the ordinance and the code redone. And it is, as you can see in my staff report, I actually put the chapter on the staff report. You see how tiny this chapter is? And it like only lists two streets, and every time we do anything, it's like a whole code change again. And in the meantime, MRC has suggested, and UniCode has suggested things that shouldn't be in your code and shouldn't be, and this is one that should not be. They're saying that you should just be able to change your traffic with more flexibility. So, I am asking you to do that and to remove this one little section from our code.
Okay, I would like to recommend a motion, adopting ordinance 786, removing chapter 10.16 from the town code regarding one-way streets.
Oh, who gets to say? Jenny. Okay, any other questions on this item? Okay, all those in favor of adopting ordinance 786, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, you have staff reports from everybody. Donna is, was on vacation last weekend and is coming back on Thursday. So, we do not have a staff report from her, but you have one from Jen and from Joe and from our marshal. You can see by these staff reports how busy everybody is and how sad the cat was.
Stormwater.
Cat rescued out of the stormwater drain. By Tony, there's never a dog on it, and hope it works. Yeah?
What about the, any news on the fire at the?
At the bathroom?
Yeah.
I have not heard any news, you know, you guys, you know, there's been other fires in the community.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so a couple, two or three months ago, a porta potty was burned to the ground at the Green Bay Farm in their parking lot. And it was a while ago, so we didn't really, you know, think of anything of it. And then, our restroom has been continuously vandalized and then burned. And a week after that, a porta potty in Don Sherman's winery field was burned to the ground. And then, last Friday, it happened again.
At Don's?
Yeah. And then, there was a, and we have no idea if this is related, because they don't know who's doing this. There was a car that was torched and kind of destroyed in the Terry Trailer Park. That might be, they kind of might know what's going on there, and that's kind of a separate situation. But no, so far, they are, you know, we're officers, this is a small island and a small community, so they know who to like check with and know who has history of issues like this. But so far, no, they don't, they don't know if it's the same person doing all of them or who that is. The Green Bay Farm actually has a, they had a camera in the parking lot. It's so far away that there's a little truck. I mean, they have a cam, they have video of the person that did theirs, but you can't see the person's face, can't see the make or license plate of the truck. I think the truck looks blue, but that might not even be the case. But they, and they have a person parking by the porta potty, going into the porta potty, coming out, and then no one, and so then, the camera's just static. And 20 minutes later, the porta potty is, it's visible that it's burning, you know, it's plastic, takes a while. And they, there was no one else going in. So, that looks, it looked like a male. But again, don't know if that's the same person down the rest of the, so, yeah, it's a little bit scary. It's very unusual for our pretty safe and crime-free town and area. Yes, except the car. But that might be.
The car.
Yeah, yeah. That's. So, yeah, and apparently, there was a couple, and so, this is probably not related. There was a couple, well, see, the police are telling me things now that they wouldn't normally have told me. Apparently, there was a couple of little shed outbuildings down in the south part of the island that had been, that had been set on fire. So, no, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have any information where I'm at. Okay, anything else from the, from the staff reports that you have questions on? I love this picture of the plant. I mean, it looks like you can eat off the floor, doesn't it? The water plant, how it's. Lots of, the staff is involved in, pretty heavily involved in grant, in grant writing right now for grants that are due in the next two or three months for possible funding for next year. So, we'll tell you about that if we're successful with any of them. Okay, so, council reports. Jackie, you want to start?
I do, because I have a show and tell.
Okay.
Hot off the presses, the new embrace moving from the islands, keep it real, guys who were taught to travel.
Nice.
And, yeah, each other, they literally, I've got them today, and they were hot off the presses, they're really, really nice. Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, we're just, we're busy, busy.
And Koopa's on the cover.
Isn't that nice?
It's really nice, I love.
You are the first group together.
I love the keep it real and the guys who are traveling.
It is, it is new. I mean, I had a meeting with Sherry this morning. Actually, we met with the lady I saw you mention last month, their last meeting, who's the new person at the hospital.
Mark, yeah, the foundation?
Yeah, Sherry and I met with her this morning. So, anyway, so Sherry had them in her car, and I have the first back. So, you can tease if you see, so Sherry said, well, Linda Echols is going to be accepted, we will have them first.
I was going to say, are they going to be in chambers or?
They're going to be all over, yeah. Yeah, so Koopa's age is here, it's age 16.
Can we get some for John Muller, is that not where we're supposed to be?
We're getting, we're currently getting our betrayal guides, we're breaking those up.
Off the beat.
We're getting more of those names, because, yeah, they can't, they're just gone as soon as places get them, so, yeah. Anyway, things are going well.
This is really nice.
Yeah, the state auditor is almost done with the audit, and that's really going well, and, yeah, Island Transit got a little blurb in there, did you see that, Jen?
I've talked to that.
Oh, page 25, the little thing called No Car, No Road. So, you might want, I don't know, do you have any, no, not this week, do you?
Oh, my goodness, John, this is amazing.
I wish I could take credit for it, I'm just passing it over. Yeah, I was pretty excited.
How long that took, does it take her?
I don't know.
It's really scary.
Yeah, it really is. Playing the map is really good.
We brought our meeting to a halt here, we're all reading.
Oh, yeah, I know, I'm sorry. I don't have an extra one for you, Jen, I'm sorry. She really scraped, she only had six, or five, six. She was going to pick us up, so literally, these are just.
Okay, well, we'll get some.
I will get John, I will get you more.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything else? That's one lot, okay? Mike, do you have anything?
The June Law Justice Council meeting was canceled one minute before our start. I was already up to Zoom, ready to go, you know, I'm going to email, cancel, so, so that's all I had to report.
Hey, Pat. Hey, Rick. Jen. We are meeting, was canceled, but just a reminder about the June, you know, the service expansions for the summer to the state parks and Sunday service, Sunday service has been going really well.
I was going to ask.
Yeah. To the 253 people.
Really?
Yeah.
One's a name, or?
No, just, I think, in total, the word's still getting out.
I agree.
Yeah.
What about the park drop offs?
I don't have enough broken that one, but, you know, I, it's slowly getting, you know, more and more traction.
See, the bus is going right by my house, the buses.
All day.
Do they all go down Broadway?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does it cross the highway?
Yeah.
Well, it comes and trys right. Comes down Broadway?
They'll stop it.
I'm just wondering if they cross the highway.
Oh, I didn't know it's. I don't know if they go down, straight across Broadway to E's.
Right.
They're usually turning right or left.
Okay, okay.
But they're still crossing.
They turn, yeah, they turn left if they're self, they can turn left on the road to Broadway.
Actually, I just found the number two, I'm just, lady, what are you passengers average per second?
Per second? That's good, that's pretty good.
Wow.
That's great.
Yes. The staff got cookies. They got cookies for a chicken and pasta.
They got cookies?
The staff. That's all I got.
Okay, so, thank you, thank you for those council reports. We have one discussion item, and this is really quick. I just wanted to, we went through the public facility code last time and went through all of it, I, so I'm not bringing all of it back, but you guys were very specific that you wanted something a little bit more specific on the free rentals, so I took a stab at it. And, let's see, I don't think I changed any of the reservations, or is this just was already on there? Oh, oh, damage deposit, yes, damage deposit. So, we, it was there for everybody, I was saying we take it out for everybody, we decided to kind of do a compromise. And so, what the staff and I are suggesting is that we have the ability to charge a cleaning deposit and make it more than $50, because otherwise, it's just not, not worth anything. So, to make it, we can, to make it, have the ability to charge it up to $250, if you're expecting more than 50 people at your event, if alcohol is served, if the event includes amplified music, if it includes food, and/or the applicant has not been a responsible renter in the past, then that a damaged deposit may be required. And we're, but we are kind of putting this in here that, that it's up to the staff to determine who you're going to charge. Oh, I guess not the staff from here, I'm from the refrigerator. And we can look at that, because we see, we sign off on the, on the applications. So, that was one thing that is different from last we talked. Oh, and then, we, the town does maintain a do not rent to list, but we put it in the code to make it official. Payment for security services. Well, that's the same, that's not changed. Okay, so, waiver of fees. So, what I'm, here's some ideas that I have to, to see what you think about. That certain renters who provide real or in-kind services to the town, may, their fees may be waived. Fees will not be waived on weekend rentals or high-use periods, you know, I don't do that now. Fees will not be waived for fundraising events, anything that's raising revenue. Fees will not be waived for, fees will not be waived for individuals or all nonprofits. Okay, so, I put that in there because, you know, you'd be surprised how many individual people say, I've lived here for 30 years, I should get to use the Red Bull for free. Or, you know, like, seriously, and this is, it's hard, like, but, like, I'm having, you know, my husband's memorial service, and he's, he's, he was an upstanding person in the community, and I'm, and I'm, you need to give me the Red Bull for free. I mean, like, I've actually had hard conversations like that. Well, that one was so hard that I said, okay, fine, and I paid it myself, because I'm not going to get into a conversation with a grieving widow and, you know, just, I mean, so I want you guys to know, I say no. So, there's really, I've never had an individual ask for a free rental that I thought that they should get, so that's why I put no individuals and not all nonprofits. So that's why I put no individuals and not all nonprofits.
I think everyone being treated the same unless they prove otherwise is really important. Rather than having, uh, people, whether it's, not that I don't trust you all, but there's other people. I think it should be consistent. I think if they have any of those things that are listed, they should, that, that damage, uh, deposit of two hundred and fifty dollars will be required. Um, and there's something about returning it, but, um, like returning the damage deposit.
Um, there was, I think, yeah. Since the key goes, shouldn't be necessary hurdles, and then by the way, you have to come cleaning. The town will maintain it. So under, there was an N C there, there's, uh, on return of the keys and after damage, uh, assistance.
And then, um, I guess in the waiver fee, I, I like that you have more examples. Cause I think there was one through four maybe do it. I'm not sure what a real service is than an in-kind service. I mean, I think the perception, and, and I'm, I'm gonna speak to number five, which has been, um, an issue over time, especially with nonprofits, that most nonprofits do a lot of good for the community and the larger community. Um, and I think that, that most of these, the number five, um, should hit. Um, because there's, you know, Sound Water Service does good things, there's others, folks that do good things in town. And we give the Chamber money, we give the Fred Waterfront Association money, uh, we give the historical museum money, we give the preserved money. And so if the, I think, Coop goes off to Fred Waterfront Association, and I'm not sure, may give money back to the town. That would be something, but just because they're fulfilling their mission. I mean, uh, you know, senior services, that's, there's all kinds of things, and I, I think it's a mistake. It's not that much money. So I think you should strike, I would recommend you strike number five unless one of those organizations goes above and beyond. Like, I think the Lions and, like, the Thanksgiving and the other two are maybe solid examples. But I think the other one is, well, you know, we think they're good, and they've done it on top. And maybe we don't really care about what they do as much, because we are, you know, projected. And that's within my recommendations. And then as item G, um, we need to change town administrator.
So would you prefer, you know, give her the...
Oh yeah, we just, we, yeah, we still need to work on that, because I was just trying to come back on the, on the damage deposit and the...
Yeah.
I don't know what folks think about, you know, the item C and, I don't know, yeah.
I'm gonna definitely talk about it one at a time. So do you, do we need the damage deposit open to the gas interpretation? Or, or do we require it of everybody? If we're really required of everybody, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna wanna take a couple of these things off with food. Like, everybody has food, so we would...
What about you? Well, the thing is, if you are having food, you make the paper a ditcher. Cause even if you say, oh, no, 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 the theater, the theater should bring it in, you know? And they're gonna get a big job. Yeah. We're just, we're just serving coffee and cookies, well, you know, it's still... So I don't know that I would, I would probably focus more on the size of the crowd and the alcohol and the amplified music. Those are kind of the best. Like, because we have a meeting with fifty people in there for a couple hours a night, that's, that's gonna be fun. A little bit of town. Oh, no, that, no, I mean, like, lots of people at meetings, there are no accountants, lots of people have people in. And if they're just having a meeting, if they've got fifty or a hundred people coming, um, which does happen, but they're not, it's, that's still, if I move in, it's gonna cause damage more, or require a lot of cleaning after this. So we might, I might look at, um, maybe alcohol, amplified music. And if you haven't been a responsible renter in the past, you maybe just take the food up. I know Jen has been there.
There's just more, I mean, it just brings us back in charge, and then security deposit, everybody, so many people have food.
So what, what are the typical damage experiences?
Um, you know, there's not a ton of really big damage, mainly a clean thing or a trash, more like that. Like it was a couple of weeks ago, it just went trash. But once it cleaned up, there wasn't, there wasn't a lot of damage. Most of the company all could do, and just, you know, the bathrooms, the floor, and the kitchen, everything, everything.
I, I, I support half, you know, comments about, we, we can't leave it to our discretion and say this person has to pay the tuition. I mean, there's, like, it's... Even if you wanted it, you're less than a pound, but it can have to qualify or even, then, I mean, I, I, I agree with that. I think there just needs to be a standard, and all people...
Yeah, well, if we're gonna just turn right around and refund it, I, I don't know if it's in a higher amount. But like, well, maybe it's me fifty dollars. We never do the same, and I'm gonna bring...
In most places, they have a damage deposit. And ninety, yeah, 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 I just rented the, I just, yeah, I just rented the whole, and it's... Really common, and then if you do it, it's off, get it back. And always the way it's... And most of the ninety-five percent of the damage deposits, basically, are going to be given. Yeah, it's not, it's not very often. Damage is more like, it almost more like, not like, not intentional, like that, like a flying piece falling in, or a table is broken, or a window shamed. It's still a tough one.
Yeah, yeah.
But I mean, it's something like, intentional damage, I think, you know, only takes one.
Yeah, okay.
This is editorial. I would change wherever it says more than that, I would change that to people.
I want to think of that, or, or, I'm gonna be a business, and then you would think... Okay, okay. So you guys are all feeling that, that we should be more consistent with the damage deposit? Okay, and so then what about the, um, no fees? I, uh, do you agree with, um, that it's also not good to pick out certain nonprofits that, you know, I feel are partners or give back in a specific way to the town? All, all the nonprofits are great, you know, they all serve whatever their mission is, and some of them are just a Coop goes, some of them are a fund for life, you know, a life. Um, I guess things are, I mean, because they're in town, because they, they help other projects, um, they, they're present students, they, they...
And then what's four, yeah, I'm looking at...
And I was gonna say, I, I've been to nonprofits, and I know a lot of nonprofits, and I heard a lot of, um, unhappiness with cats. So before I came, I did, when you hear about, um, the expression, I mean, that they could have been, you know, I'm not saying anybody, well, Red Hall was one of it, but, um, but we used to have this discussion about the, um, money, you know, the, the lodging tax money, and, um, and change that so that it was a fair playing field for everyone if they were looking at it in the first. I, I just, I just, it's pretty strongly a reflection to be in that one.
Okay, so you guys agree with that?
Unless there's a, something really like the other four examples. Something very tangible.
Yeah, because the first four examples, I think, you know, specifically, I mean, that's, I mean, it's, um, long... But I'm also saying that these are just the things I can think of right then. I mean, there's good other things that aren't on here.
Yeah, but we've got that. I also think that, because we, the expression language is, we have to be...
Okay.
And I think if you talk to them, you say, look, they're just trying to be helpful to everybody, they'll understand.
Well, yeah, I mean, right now, like I say, these people are not, these, those, even those folks who turn up in the Red Hall, they're on a regular basis. Not enough, or, you know. But you, the, the Coop goes Fred Waterfront Association, it's been used to be the most. And I was, and that, and they always have their meetings at like eight in the morning until nine thirty, not a high demand period. And so I was like, yeah, sure, that's on, you know? And the reason they like, they like the Red Hall, because they did do food, but they didn't use the kitchen. I know that you were aware, but they like, made a big point of staying on the kitchen, setting up just, you know, breakfast items and stuff. But yeah, they haven't been having that as long.
Okay, thank you, I think, I think I know what that's doing.
I love that.
Oh, okay, so, um, that is the last, I don't know about, so, I'm going to adjourn on the meeting.